Good evening, and welcome to the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Towne Lake Luzerne's only Board of Appeals meeting. Do you all please rise and try to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in every state.
Thank you all. Chris, would you call the roll?
There. Hi, Cordo.
Here.
Where's the vote?
Here.
Now, do we?
Here.
Matt, Alex.
Here.
On this evening's agenda, we have three new various applications. Forty-nine Valeria Drive, eight seventy-seven East River Drive, and sixteen Hidden Valley Road. There's a line item here for accepting minutes from the ZDA meetings, and there are no minutes to accept this evening, and then new and old business. So first up on the agenda is forty-nine Valeria Drive. James, James, how do you properly pronounce your last name, so I don't murder it?
It's, uh, Morales.
Morales. Morales, and Suzanne Roberts, owners retaining wall variances for side just setback, shoreline setback, length and height of wall. So, tell us about your application.
So we have a retaining wall that's collapsing, and it needs to be replaced, it's holding the house up. And the, when I, to building kind, uh, my stonemason and now my engineer, both say it's, um, it's, it's not really an option, because the house is only seven feet from the wall. And it's all sand, and it has to be dug down to six, six feet deep, that's how high the wall is. And, um, put in this thing called a geo grid, and, uh, that according to my stonemason, requires seven feet. Well, if porch is nine feet from the wall, and the back bedroom is ten feet from the wall, and the back, uh, and he can't just go the seven feet, because it's all sand, so he's got to dig back more than seven feet, because of landslides. And so the most practical solution, I'm told, is to build a wall seven to twelve feet out from the current wall, and just encapsulate what's already there.
Okay, anyone have any questions on what the intent is?
No.
Is your stonemason, he's an actual engineer?
I, well, because, um, Karen advised me that we were gonna need an engineer anyway. So I went out and hired one before I submitted, after I submitted this paperwork, and his name is Erica Sandblom.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Has ever would had an, uh, an opportunity to review the application provided?
Yes.
Yes. Um, does anyone have any questions on the responses provided for any of the questions? Mike, I don't see a response from you.
Oh, good.
No questions?
No questions, sorry.
I was at the property today, and I can verify that that wall collapsing is absolutely accurate. Not that it has any impact on this.
Well, my motion to accept the application is complete.
I'll make that motion.
All right, well, second. Roll call vote? I don't think you need a roll call vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none carried?
Yes.
Okay.
Hearing none carried.
Did you get the second?
Uh, that was me, sacrifice Matt, thank you.
Now I'm gonna get my calendar on.
I think it's the twelve.
Thank you. Motion to establish a public hearing for area variance. Two zero two three AV five forty-nine Valeria Drive, September twelfth, excuse me, October twelfth at seven oh five PM.
Sir, I'm gonna be out of town that day, do I need to be here?
Um, it would be recommended, you, are you required to be here? No, it would be recommended you were here, we could, we could postpone it to the following month's meeting, or postpone it to the November meeting, ninth, November ninth.
Okay. Um, maybe we should do that. If I can get somebody to step in for me, like my sister or, or brother-in-law, or my brother-in-law?
As long as, as long as that person is your designated agent, Karen has a form.
I do have, well, if they're on the deed, do they need to have an agent form?
Not if they're on the deed, but is it just your sister that?
Yes.
With you, so if your brother-in-law came, you would need to fill out the form.
Okay.
Also have your engineer or your mason come as well.
Okay, let, let's just push it back to November, and if I can, if I can change it, can I change it? Because I don't know now whether I can get these, someone to step in for me.
If they set the hearing for November, they cannot move it forward.
All right, let's set it for November then, please.
As you said, they set it for next month, they could just table it next month and move it to the.
Except for I would be putting out the public hearing notice.
Twice.
Twice.
I'm sure there's a cost to that.
Yes, there is.
So just November, okay?
November's okay.
Right.
Yeah, hopefully.
So you're going to set it for November ninth?
I will change my motion to set a public hearing for area variance two zero two three AV five forty-nine Valeria Drive for November ninth at seven oh five PM.
I second that motion.
Roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Hearing none carried?
So you're all set until then?
Okay. Back here.
What, what happens is um, I have to have the public hearing in the paper at least five days, in the paper and on the website, at least five days before November ninth, and I have to have it mailed out to anyone within a five hundred foot radius of your property ten days before that, um, November ninth date.
Okay.
And you will probably receive one, you will receive one as well.
Okay, yes, understood, thank you.
Uh, before you leave, sir, uh, council has had a question on your application. Uh, the first question is the property, subject property within five hundred feet of a county or state right-of-way park, municipal boundary or watershed, draining, draining into any county or New York State facility requiring review with the Warren County Planning Board, uh, on the application, there is no response, I know you are on Lake Luzerne, I know it drains into the Hudson River, I know the answer.
Market.
Don't market.
Not yet, because the county has an, uh, a, an application on there that they've provided for, for zoning and planning departments to run a check, I ran it through there, and no county referral is required.
Oh, okay, I stand corrected.
Who turned it back now?
Right. Well, it isn't by the watershed, I mean, you're absolutely correct, but no county referral is required, is my point, okay? So, um, I wouldn't, I, I guess you should.
I'm taking care of it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You're all set.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is area variance for eight seventy-seven East River Drive, Tom with Tarnett, owner deck variance for shoreline setback.
Evening, everyone.
Evening, sir.
Um, yeah, so on this, I go by Mike, so a lot of you might know me, because Thomas is my first name, but I've always, I go by the middle name, so if you hear somebody, I'm not doing any identification kind of things.
Mike, is that what you said?
Yeah. And other names.
So tell us about your request.
Uh, my request is, is that I put a, uh, deck that wrapped around from the side to the, to the backside of it overlooking the river. I kind of live, I live a category corner to the river and the, uh, Luzerne Creek. And in doing that, I don't have any view or anything, or an egress route that was good enough through the back. And I wanted to get that, so I can get off the back and then replace the side door, and be able to use the back of that deck as uh, a place that I can over sit the back of my yard. Um, it does flood at times, it flooded up to where that, where if you, when you went in the back of that wall, and that was bad, um, and I, I wanted to, uh, you know, get that in there, so there's a couple of things I want to do to improve the area around it, which is the flood took out my one wall, which I'm working with, uh, the APA to replace, it took out the dock, and, uh, those are separate occasions where they're gonna have to come in and, uh, give the jurisdiction ruling that I'm working with right now, so there's three different things on that, that application. So when it comes to the back of the house, it's level with the back of the house. So if you, if you walk out, then you're, you're level with the house itself, you're not going down and, and back up, so, um, I moved to it as a full-time property, because twenty sixteen, moved up here, um, I've had a place since two thousand and five, kept it going, tried to, yeah, improve off of everything that was, uh, you know, failing or rotting and replacing everything, so that it get done. Living it full time when I retired from down south.
Anyone have any questions? Did everyone had an opportunity to review the packet?
Yes.
Any questions on the responses? Motion to accept area variance two zero two three AV dash six, eight seventy-seven East River Drive, Lake Luzerne, county tax map three zero five point one two dash one dash six.
I'll second it.
You guys split there. Giving it to Ralph?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, roll call vote?
Sure, I'll let you do it this time.
All righty, Mike?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Hearing none, motions carried.
Motion to set the public hearing for area variance two zero two three AV dash six, eight seventy-seven East River Drive, now I gotta go, let's say twelfth, October twelfth at seven oh five PM.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call votes?
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Hearing none, the motion's carried.
So same thing, I, um, I'll be sending out a public notice to the paper and on the website five days before the, at least five days before the twelfth, and ten days before the twelfth, I will be sending out notices to anyone within five hundred feet of your property, and yours did require a county referral as well, that's already in process.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item is new application sixteen Hidden Valley Road, Wayne Beal and Deborah Odette, owners retaining wall variance for shoreline setback and length of wall.
Hey, good evening.
Mm-hmm.
We purchased sixteen Hidden Valley Road about a month, about a year ago in October, and our plan was to, as you can see in the, the one diagram you've had in your packet there, when we bought the property, the property sloped down, a lot of those timbers for the walking path going down there were all completed. So I think we decided it was a combination of those decayed timbers, and we also wanted to create something from the lower level of the walkout basement to have a flat place, um, primarily for our, we have eight grandchildren, so we thought it would be nicer if we had a flat area up above, which we ended up uh, planting grass up there, so it's nice and flat. And then hence the other picture that you saw was the retaining wall that we built. I think in hindsight, I think the other two applicants are looking for permission. We're looking for some forgiveness, I think, in hindsight, we should have contacted, I call him Chris with a K, to find out what we should have done. Um, we own several taverns down in Saratoga County, they don't have restrictions down there with regard to retaining walls, which we've done in many of our businesses down there. But that's certainly not an excuse for us not to have contacted Karen or Chris to say, hey, what are the regulations here? I think the other issue, um, that we have in meeting Chris onsite was, we're supposed to have a fifty-foot setback, we only have a forty-five-foot setback, which I think is the other reason why we're sitting here with you folks today. So I think primarily that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We did meet with the APA last week, Chris was in contact with them today. Their only recommendation that they had was for us to do some approved plantings that they gave us, uh, an extensive list that our landscape contractor selected to, um, put together, and we presented that to the APA when I met those two, um, representatives last week, and I think Chris was in contact with them today. We're waiting for their approval on the suggestion that our landscape person made with regard to the selections, and that was the only issue that the APA people had.
Chris and I did speak with APA today, and, um, he's correct, that's, that they're not going to require them, it doesn't appear as though they're, well, yeah, it doesn't appear as though they're going to require them to file for a variance, because they felt that a very small portion of this wall was the five feet short of that shoreline setback, the rest of it is fifty feet or more away from the shoreline, and they're looking at doing this planting, but they, they had to turn it over to their engineer, correct?
They didn't finish their determination.
Right, they haven't finished, so it's still in process, but that's what the conversation was today with them.
Okay, uh, takes the new wall. Uh, Chris, you measured the height of that above grade as what?
Five foot two inches.
Um, you had a landscape architect design this, correct?
Yes.
How far below grade is the base of the walls?
I would have to check with him, I'm not certain.
Um, and the reason I ask is because in our definition of retaining wall, uh, it cannot, it's, it exceeds six feet in height or twenty-five feet in length, measured from its lowest base. The retaining wall usually has its first course below grade, the base, that would be the lowest base. So the reason I'm bringing this up is you may want to modify your application to include a height variance, and I would like to see the drawings from your architect as to what the base is and what the overall height of the structure is.
Okay. Can I just intercede something here as well? Um, the reason that I didn't look at that at first, and I had this prepared, Matt has brought this to our attention, was I looked at it, the, um, local law says can't exceed six feet in height and the twenty-five feet in length, and I looked at it, that in our zoning ordinance, the definition of structure height, building height, is from lowest grade to highest peak. But the way the local law is written says from base to the highest peak, and I didn't catch that, which is Matt brought that up, so, um, that's where this discrepancy is coming in, I didn't think about the height, because in my mind, I just didn't relate it that way.
I'm not sure I'm, I'm clear, man, on what you're asking. I need to know, the, a retaining wall starts below grade, whether it's, whether it's crusher, or it's a course of stone.
Okay.
But the, but the wall, wall starts below grade.
Okay.
Our definition of height is from the lowest base, that includes the below grade.
Okay.
So if you, if Chris has measured your above grade at five-two, and you've got more than a foot of base, which looking at those pictures, I certainly hope you have more than a foot of base, but at least that's stone.
Okay.
Uh, then you would exceed the height requirement, so I would like to see the application modified to include a height variance.
Okay, I, I understand.
If that's acceptable to you.
Sure.
Do they have to vote on that, Mary, or is it just?
They don't have to vote on it if you're agreeing to change your.
We agree to change the application.
So you're going to need, even though, have someone measure that?
I need, I would like to see the design drawings for your wall.
Okay.
How deep the base is with, so we can make a determination as to the actual height of the wall.
Okay.
If it is, if it's less than six feet, then you don't need that variance, if it's, but if it is more than six feet, you will need that variance.
Understood.
Do you have those plans already?
We'd have to check with Dave, our landscape person.
Okay. Um, my, the reason I ask that is if he brings me a copy of those in, and you can verify it, are you gonna go, move ahead with the public hearing? Because I'm going to have to include that in the public hearing if it is indeed part of the variance request.
Uh, it would be my intention to move ahead with the public hearing. However, you brought up a good point, if that information cannot be provided, well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to have you avoid coming in for another variance application, understood?
Mm-hmm.
So do you have the design, uh, will you be able, Karen has to get the notification out five days prior to?
Ten days.
Ten days prior to the meeting.
Okay.
Which will be October twelfth, so ten days prior to that, so we would need response five work, five business days prior to that, to give the board members the opportunity to review the documents.
Okay, we can get that sooner than later.
Okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um,
How is shoreline the term, just out of curiosity?
Mean high watermark.
Mean high watermark.
Where the, where the vegetation starts is mean high watermark.
Okay. Was it a vocal contractor that did this? It's a contractor we've used in our businesses, he's based out of Mechanicville. Okay. Our businesses are in Clifton Park, around Lake and Malta, we've used this fellow, I'm gonna say close to twenty years down that way. In which towns down there, just out of curiosity, which towns do not have restrictions on retaining walls in Saratoga County? We're in the town of Clifton Park, in the village around Lake, in the town of Malta. Um, we haven't found that any of them have had restrictions on what it is that we've done down there. Okay.
Is, is, uh, the wall itself, is, uh, is that Uniblock, Interlock block?
I don't believe so, I think that they're raw stone. That's for the. Raw stone. They're man-made.
It's not manufactured?
No, it's not manufactured, it's like cut stone.
Uh, it looks just like my stairs, and that's manufactured.
That's not, I can tell you, that's not manufactured stone, is it?
I don't know.
It was stone. We were trying to make it be as appealing. Beautiful, yes.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you for saying it.
Yes.
Anyone have any other questions? On motion, somebody else made one.
Make a motion to approve this application with the, how should I word it, with the additional information as requested?
Works for me.
Anything else?
All right, I'll second that motion.
Roll call vote?
Sure.
Mike?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Hearing none, motions carried.
Motion to establish public hearing for area variance two zero two three AV dash seven sixteen Hidden Valley Road, Lake Luzerne, New York for October twelfth at seven fifteen, but I know the first one's gonna take more than ten minutes.
Thank you.
Do we have a second on that?
I know, so can I? Who seconded it?
Mike, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both.
Hearing none, motions carried.
Okay, same thing, I'll be sending out, you need to get that information to me as, when you can, but at least by, I would say, let me look at my calendar.
I think nine twenty-seven is roughly five business days.
Thank you.
For.
So, all right, and then I, and I will be sending out the notices to people within five hundred feet of your property, and it will go on the website and in the paper at least five days before the hearing.
Okay.
Okay. And
Thank you.
The members of the board may come to your property, we will get it, so anyone that has it, yeah.
Okay, of course. Was it moon spruce? No, it's surroundings, um.
And.
We're good friends with, with Bob as well. Looks like it. Yeah, it looks like this stuff, right?
Yep.
We do, man.
We're good.
Thank you. Thank you. Good day.
We have no, uh, minutes to look at this evening under the category of new and old business, uh, which I probably should have started at the beginning, and I forgot to, but, uh, Mike brought them on board as a full member of the zoning Board of Appeals.
Hey.
Although I'm sure it's not much different from filling in as the alternate.
No. Yes.
Except now, now you officially have a seat at the head table.
Especially when I'm never here, especially when I'm never here in the summer.
Uh, on the, on the retaining walls, um, going over the, what, what our regulations say, um, words we have in our regulations are based on some experiences with people constructing, Karen, feel free to correct me, uh, constructing retaining walls up on the heights, which resulted in uh, drainage going into a neighbor's property and washing out the neighbor's property, which is something which is not allowed.
It was undermining the foundation of a house, the runoff they put in a this was before I came on board, but the previous, um, chairman, not, not Jim Niles, but the one before that chairman filled me in on it, and I talked to Jamie Muller, who was on the board at the time, and someone had put in a retaining wall to make a parking access, and, um, it started, it changed the runoff and started to, um, like I said, it started to ruin the foundation of the exist, of the neighboring house.
A lot of surrounding towns have coves just like that, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
It's even worse once you get out towards there.
I, uh, I spent a, a I wanna say, I spent some time investigating this, trying to find an engineering basis for the six feet and the twenty-five feet, and I can give you numbers from all over the place, um, they range from two feet to, in height, requiring an engineering approval, uh, to pick a number in length, twenty-five feet, forty feet, fifty feet, twenty feet. Uh, but the one thing I did find is, and the reason I asked about the, the, uh, the block, um, is because the two most popular block manufacturers, VersaLock and Unilock, both recommend no more than four feet in height without a, a three-inch center mark. So I, I mean, I think. At I we, I think we need to revisit our six foot and twenty five foot, but right now, that's what our regulations say, but I'm not sure. I mean, six foot came from Dave O'Neil, who was a member of the council. He was a hardscape individual. That was his recommendation. Um, but if you look at the manufacturer's recommendation. Six foot wouldn't cut it without a P signing off on it. So I just wanted, wanted to bring that up.
It is only to protect the people.
Absolutely.
Because like you look at that wall in front of Loser Market. Some big company can go host in that. Have you seen that that little retain wall behind Loser Market? Two years ago, that's fallen apart. That was not two years ago with VersaLock lock.
The uh, the property on Valeria. Uh, I was there today and looked at the retaining wall. Uh, that retaining wall is is stone face on dirt. Six feet high. I'm surprised it's it. It's lasted as long as it has. Cause there's there's no tiebacks and there's nothing holding it on.
And no engineer would approve the cantilettage. All that rock in there because then that freezes and thaws it. Everything, it changes, you know, nobody would. I'm I might. They never thought of burying that concrete wall. It it is dirt, but it's still.
At my understanding, in in my discussions with the owner, it was his, his. Hardscape contractor.
Yeah.
Not the the engineer who was making that recommendation. He has hired an engineer because he's going, he wants to go nine feet.
It's just sad, cause like the families, it's their family homes.
Anybody else have new, old business? Mary, is there anything you'd like to discuss?
Uh, no, uh, yes. So I don't know if um this was sent out today or not.
Is this client privileged? Privileged information or is this for Chris to? Put into the record?
It could be either. So we are gonna discuss current litigation. If you would like to go into executive session, we will just need a motion in a second. And everyone here will have to approve it.
I make a motion to go into the executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Pose. So do we have to adjourn? Me now, or?